I'm Councilmember John Lee. Public comment will now be taken both in person in the council chamber and via teleconference for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Blumenfield, De Leon, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee McCosker, Padilla Park, Price, Rahman Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 8, 2023.
Councilmember Hernandez moves. Councilmember Rahman seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Yaroslavski moves. Councilmember Padilla seconds. Next?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. It's time for the flag salute.
Would everyone please rise for the flag salute? Councilmember Yaroslavski, would you mind, please, leading us in the flag salute?
Please stand if you are able. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we please run through the agenda?
Yes, sir. There is a request to continue. Items 16 to September 13, 2023, sir, and there is a request to hold item 19 on the desk.
Without objection, that will be the order. Next?
Item number 1 through 8 are items noted for public hearing. Items 9 through 12 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 13 through 19 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Members, would any of the members like to call any of those items special? Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to call item 9 special for a separate vote, please.
Okay. Any other specials, members? Councilmember Yaroslavski?
I'd like to call items 11 and 18 for comment.
Okay, 11 and 18 for comment. Any other specials, councilmembers? Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Can you... Which items are now before us?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 10 and 12, sir.
All right. Without objections, those items are now before us. Let's see. We're not able to vote on those items that have not been called special? Madam Clerk?
Yes, but council may now vote on items 10 through 12. Should the clerk open the roll and close the roll?
Yes, please open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. President, would council like to go to presentation or public comment, sir?
Public comment. Thank you, members. We are moving on to public comment? Okay.
Yes, sir. Let me read the instructions for public comment, sir. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comments should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star 6 to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star 6 to unmute.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, would you please explain the speaking rules to the members of the public?
Yes, and, Mr. President, my understanding is that there is an amendment to item number 19. Would you like me to read it in before public comment begins?
Yes, please.
So, the amendment reads that item number 19 be amended to adopt the following in lieu of recommendation 1 of the motion. Transfer slash appropriate $857,000 from the Building and Safety Permit Enterprise Fund Number 48R-08, Account 08Y204, Reserve for future cost, to the Repair and Demolition Fund Number 346-08 as a loan for demolition, abatement, and clearance of a nuisance/vacated story residential dwelling located at 436 South Boyle Avenue, as well as for urgent demolition needs at 4151 South Broadway and other demolitions for the fiscal year. Said loan to be repaid upon the payment to the city of liens recorded on these properties. And authorize the Building and Safety Department to make any corrections, clarifications, or revisions to the above fund transfer instructions, including any new instructions in order to effectuate the intent of this motion, and including any corrections and changes to fund or account numbers. Said corrections/clarifications/changes may be made orally, electronically, or by any other means. And for the rules regarding public comment, to people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on and whether you want to provide general public comment. You'll have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, for the items open for public comment, and one minute for general public comment if you wish. Please speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you don't do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are 1 through 8, 13, 14, and 15, and 17, 18, and 19. Item number 16 has been continued to September 13. You may, of course, speak to any of the other items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction during your one minute of general public comment. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star 6 to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or you'll unfortunately forfeit your time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important. First, while waiting for your turn to speak, please keep one ear to the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to speak. Second, if you're listening to the meeting on other devices, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately when it is your turn to speak. Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause a lot of confusion if you continue to listen on those other devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's start with the first public speaker. First, if we can have come up Stacy Segura-Bollinger, Ian Jamison, Andrew Grabner, and Kelvin Harrison on the right, please.
What agenda item would you like to speak on?
It's general comment, sir. And if you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under? Sure, my name is Kelvin Harrison.
All right, you have one minute to speak on general public comment.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm addressing Reverend Jesse Jackson. Sir, I have been writing you for many years concerning a lot of injustice that's been happening to me. It started in San Luis Obispo, and now it has transferred here to Los Angeles. A lot of false allegations have been upon me. I've been going to city council meetings in San Luis Obispo for many years, and I am a political prisoner because of the truths that was happening there of injustice, harassment, as well as racism. I am now getting attacked by individuals here in this community of Los Angeles of various nationalities. Whom are they connected to? I do not know, but, sir, you have all the information. You may not know me, sir, but your individuals at your office, Felicia Neal, has been getting information, as well as Mr. John Mitchell. Sir, I am homeless because of this, and I am still fighting for my rights, sir, because this is wrong, and I have been a good citizen and have been well-recognized within the military as well. Veterans Administration will not help me find housing because they say they pay me too much. I need help. I need attorneys, and I have tried. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to the next speaker. Please state your name and which items you'd like to speak on.
Ian Jamison, general public comment, please. On Friday, September 8, the city issued a memo to Los Angeles over 50,000 employees stating that masks were advisable. This is the pretext to impose a new mask mandate. Employees are not going to comply with this. We're not going to comply with this. We're not complying any further with fascism. On Wednesday, Los Angeles firefighter John Knox will begin his Board of Rights hearings, which will likely result in his termination. You are going to fire a firefighter who has given decades of his life to this city rescuing people from fires because he won't comply with the fascist mandate for a pharmaceutical that does not prevent infection or transmission when we are not in any states of emergency over COVID. You all made a great show on Labor Day and September 11 of honoring first responders. You have waged an unprecedented war on first responders. Your present posture in Ray Labor makes the GOP look like Eugene Debs. You are all the most sickening hypocrites. End the frickin' mandate. We're not complying with any future mask mandates. Get out of the private medical decisions of the...
Speaker, your time has expired. All right, next speaker, please. Please state your name and what items you'd like to speak on.
Stacy Segura-Bollinger. I'd like to speak on items 16, 17, 18, 19, and general public comment, please. So, item 16 has been continued to September 13, but you have three minutes for the other items and one minute for general public comment. Okay, thank you. Item 17, capital improvements at Rainier Park, Council District 10, from Quimby Funds. I'm not sure exactly what Quimby Funds are. I need to do some homework on that, but I think it's great to see motions supporting our parks and green space, because I notice a lot of motions have to do with roads and maintenance, and we really need better investment in our green spaces, our shared spaces, our parks. I think something that happened during COVID that I'd wish we learned a better lesson from is we learned how valuable our outdoor communal space is, right? We had the Alfresco program, and I don't know if any of you made a habit of going to parks during COVID, but a lot of people were spending more time in parks because there was not a lot of public space available, so you'd find people having lunch together in the park, having play rehearsal in the park, running their lines for their auditions. So, these are things I really like to see, although you always have to be conscientious when it comes to where this funding is coming from. You know, I want to let you all know I'm not just here with negativity all the time. This is something I actually really appreciate, and I'm glad to see on the agenda. So, yeah, the Parks and Recreation Services, getting more funding, having the ability to serve the people better, that's awesome. Item 19, my issue with this is not necessarily... Well, it's a demolition and abatement for clearing what's deemed a nuisance property. I think it's clear to me that the city is really focused on gearing up to have a lot of guests for the Olympics. We're seeing a lot of proactive movement on stuff like this. My biggest issue with this, though, is just that there's a racist name on it, something that Paul... reserved for future cost, to the Repair and Demolition Fund, number three four six dash zero eight, as a loan for demolition, abatement, and clearance of a nuisance slash vacated story residential dwelling, located at four thirty-six South Boyle Avenue, as well as for urgent demolition needs at forty-one fifty-one South Broadway and other demolitions for the fiscal year. Said loan to be repaid upon the payment to the city of liens recorded on these properties. And authorize the Building and Safety Department to make any corrections, clarifications, or revisions to the above fund transfer instructions, including any new instructions in order to effectuate the intent of this motion, and including any corrections and changes to fund or account numbers. Said corrections slash clarifications slash changes may be made orally, electronically, or by any other means. And for the rules regarding public comment. To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on, and whether you want to provide general public comment. You'll have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, for the items open for public comment, and one minute for general public comment if you wish. Please speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you don't do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are one through eight, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Item number sixteen has been continued to September thirteenth. You may, of course, speak to any of the other items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction during your one minute of general public comment. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or you'll unfortunately forfeit your time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important. First, while waiting for your turn to speak, please keep one ear to the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to speak. Second, if you're listening to the meeting on other devices, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately when it is your turn to speak. Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause a lot of confusion if you continue to listen on those other devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's start with the first public speaker. First, if we can have come up Stacy Segarra-Bollinger, Ian Jamison, Andrew Grabner, and Kelvin Harrison on the right, please. What agenda item would you like to speak on?
It's general comment, sir.
Okay, and if you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under?
Sure, my name is Kelvin Harrison.
All right, you have one minute to speak on general public comment.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm addressing Reverend Jesse Jackson. Sir, I have been writing you for many years concerning a lot of injustice that's been happening to me. It started in San Luis Obispo, and now it has transferred here to Los Angeles. A lot of false allegations been upon me. I've been going to city council meetings in San Luis Obispo for many years, and I am a political prisoner because of the truths that was happening there of injustice, harassment, as well as racism. I am now getting attacked by individuals here in this community of Los Angeles of various nationalities. Whom are they connected to? I do not know, but sir, you have all the information. You may not know me, sir, but your individuals at your office, Felicia Neal, has been getting information as well as Mr. John Mitchell. Sir, I am homeless because of this. And I am still fighting for my rights, sir, because this is wrong, and I have been a good citizen, and have been well-recognized within the military as well. Veterans Administration will not help me find housing because they say they pay me too much. I need help. I need attorneys, and I have tried. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to the next speaker. Please state your name and which items you'd like to speak on.
Ian Jamison, general public comment, please. On Friday, September eighth, the city issued a memo to Los Angeles over fifty thousand employees stating that masks were advisable. This is the pretext to impose a new mask mandate. Employees are not going to comply with this. We're not going to comply with this. We're not complying any further with fascism. On Wednesday, Los Angeles firefighter John Knox will begin his Board of Rights hearings, which will likely result in his termination. You are going to fire a firefighter who has given decades of his life to this city rescuing people from fires because he won't comply with the fascist mandate for a pharmaceutical that does not prevent infection or transmission when we are not in any states of emergency over COVID. You all made a great show on Labor Day and September eleventh of honoring first responders. You have waged an unprecedented war on first responders. Your present posture in Ray Labor makes the GOP look like Eugene Debs. You are all the most sickening hypocrites. End the frickin' mandate. We're not complying with any future mask mandates. Get out of the private medical decisions of the over-
Speaker, your time has expired.
All right, next speaker, please. Please state your name and what items you'd like to speak on.
Stacy Segarra-Bollinger. I'd like to speak on items sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and general public comment, please.
So item sixteen has been continued to September thirteenth, but you have three minutes for the other items and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. Item seventeen, capital improvements at Rainier Park, Council District ten, from Quimby funds. I'm not sure exactly what Quimby funds are. I need to do some homework on that. But I think it's great to see motions supporting our parks and green space because I notice a lot of motions have to do with roads and maintenance, and we really need better investment in our green spaces, our shared spaces, our parks. I think something that happened during COVID that I'd wish we learned a better lesson from is we learned how valuable our outdoor communal space is, right? We had the Alfresco program, and I don't know if any of you made a habit of going to parks during COVID, but a lot of people were spending more time in parks because there was not a lot of public space available. So you'd find people having lunch together in the park, having play rehearsal in the park, running their lines for their auditions. So these are things I really like to see. Although you always have to be conscientious when it comes to where this funding is coming from. You know, I want to let you all know I'm not just here with negativity all the time. This is something I actually really appreciate, and I'm glad to see on the agenda. So yeah, the Parks and Recreation Services, getting more funding, having the ability to serve the people better, that's awesome. Item nineteen, my issue with this is not necessarily, well, it's a demolition and abatement for clearing what's deemed a nuisance property. I think it's clear to me that the city is really focused on gearing up to have a lot of guests for the Olympics. We're seeing a lot of proactive movement on stuff like this. My biggest issue with this, though, is just that there's a racist's name on it. Something that Paul Krikorian said in an open letter he made to Kevin was that, you know, he's going to continue to have a terrible legacy. But unfortunately, y'all entertaining his motions is only serving to rewrite his legacy so that when someone, our posterity says, "Who, I'm looking up L.A. history, who was Kevin DeLeón?" They're going to see a lot of motions and presentations here, and the story about him comparing a black child to a handbag and participating in a racist, homophobic, disgusting conversation with former members of the body, that's going to be buried under all of the other virtue signals and stuff that you all helped him do. The people of L.A. have overwhelmingly cried out that your presence significantly worsens our pain every day you remain interferes with our functionality. You want to rewrite your legacy. KDL, it's time to move on. You're a coward, Paul Krikorian. Oh, resignation, Kevin DeLeón. Bye-bye. Take Curran with you. Resignation is what we really want. Bye-bye. I don't think we'll miss you. Get us a resignation from that racist Kevin. Why, why did you never break your quorum, city council? Now we really know how easily you just let it go. Oh, by the way, Nethia, we're still waiting on a statement from your office about the commission appointment of Jamie York. You weren't at work that day, but you owe us a statement. You owe it to your constituents to let us know how you feel about these things.
Thank you. I believe we have one last public comment before we move on to presentations. Can you please state your name and which items you'd like to speak on?
All right, nineteen and general comment.
Okay, you have one minute for item nineteen and one minute for general public comment.
All right, nineteen is a motion introduced by Kevin DeLeón. He shouldn't have anything on the agenda. Just stop seconding his motion, stop proving his motion, stop letting him have anything on the agenda. Like, he shouldn't have anything on there at all. I don't care what it is. I don't care whether you agree with what it is or not. And, you know, and he might try to sneak something in there because we all know who he really is, and who knows what the motions are going to be, you know? So there might be something in there that we don't know what it is. He's just sneaking in there to see what happens, you know? And just hope no one ever noticed it. So vote down everything that he introduces. All right, general comment. Yeah, so we got a lot of corruption around this horseshoe, as always. I guess, I said, city staffer B got his turn to run the meeting. No matter how much you try, you're not going to be, you're never going to be anything like Englander. So you're going to be elected out. And, yeah, Kevin, you still need to resign. But a lot of you need to resign. You recuse yourself from everything you're supposed to today, Curran. Yeah, we're still waiting for word on whether the cops who removed people from the meeting during the vote on their salary increase, whether they're not taking the salary increase, because it's a serious conflict of interest if they do. All right.
All right, thank you. That concludes the speakers that we have here in the council chambers. So we'll go ahead and begin public comment on the phone. Let's go ahead and take the first caller, please.
First caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hello, Rob Cohen. I'd like to speak on general public comment.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on? Just public comment?
General public comment.
So you have one minute.
Yeah. We are about a month from the Ethics Commission meeting that was canceled because they don't have a quorum. So I just am very curious to see who our council president is going to appoint, given, he said, any day now. And I just find it really rich that we're having this discussion about council expansion, and we're going to be approaching the one-year anniversary of the Fed tape, and we're not going to have shit ready to move forward. That's going to be something that reflects poorly upon all of you. You know, you can start to point fingers when we get there, but I think we all know where the problem is. And that is leadership. A fifteen-member council is being run with a stranglehold, just like it was under Neuer Martinez. We have to change that system. And this argument that increasing the size of-
Caller, your time has expired.
All right, next caller, please.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits seven-two-five-five, please press star six to unmute.
Yes, City Council. This is a general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
I called in a couple vehicles stolen in the San Fernando Valley Mission Division. And again, District Six, we go to call them, they put you on a loophole phone call. Yet here is a billion-dollar increase. It took forty minutes for me not to be deterred and get the message across and call them back and get that information there. Meanwhile, day by day, that car got stripped down, no response. Then a second vehicle, same thing, no response. Mission Division, please. If we're calling you and taking the time to help you, help us help you. Respond to those calls. Those cars are being stripped down at the owner's convenience, at the owner's expense, excuse me. Come on. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Good morning. This is Brock Landers, Los Angeles Private Investigator. How are you doing today?
Good. Which items would you like to speak on?
I would like to speak on the open items and general public comment.
Okay, so the open items are items one through eight, thirteen through fifteen, and seventeen through nineteen. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. So on all of the lighting initiatives, I don't think we should go forward with any of these. I think that if the city is safe enough to defund the police and not needing robot dogs or anything like that, then why do we need to put better lighting in? And also, I think because of greenhouse emissions and global warming that we should put our money where our mouth is and really just sacrifice our lights and realize that we'll be okay living in the dark. For all of the parks, I think that we've put too much of an emphasis on dog parks, and I really think that, you know, we should add a couple of cat parks to some of the public parks. Give them, you know, stuff to climb on. We could have, you know, I'm sure Stinks would love to get outside and, you know, play with some other cats, and I think it'd be a great place to hold the adoptions for the other cats. And for general public comment, I want you to think about a teenage girl with a baby strapped to her back, working among a group of other teenage girls with babies strapped to their back. The majority of these girls have experienced being pushed down into the field and raped, raped by a person of authority or someone else working in the field. The children on their backs are the result of these rapes. These young girls work in the heat, exposing their children and themselves, breeding in toxin, causing them to deal with issues with their lungs and general development. The goal is to fill a bag of cotton to make T-shirts for someone that is going to sell them for eighty dollars a pop. The girl's making eighty cents per bag. What would you think of the people wearing those T-shirts? Now instead of cotton, realize that this is what the teenage girls in the Congo experience every day. So Stacy and member of city councils currently looking at your phones, I want you to think about the young girl that was raped to get the cobalt that was made to use to make the battery in that phone.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Next caller, please.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits five-six-eight-six, please go ahead.
Yes. Hi, good morning. Can I get a general public comment, please?
Yes, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. What a big joke you guys are. You guys treat this city council chambers like it's a picnic or something. Like you guys are at the park having a picnic and just chit-chatting with each other. When are you guys going to be more transparent? When are you guys going to listen to the public when they're making public comment? It's such a shame that this is the only city council than any other city council in the U.S. that doesn't care about its constituents, that does not pay attention during public comment. This is not why we pay taxes for. This is why we did not elect you to do this kind of thing. We elected you to do your job and listen to your constituents, not sit on your asses and just chit-chat and ignore public comments and looking at each other.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits five-five-five-four, please press star six to unmute.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
I just hear a public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Yeah. He needs to resign. He is disgrace to Los Angeles. I'm talking about the pinky-faced Kevin DeLeón. Another thing, our streets need to be repaved. The sidewalks are cracking. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller. We'll take two more callers.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, good morning. Item nineteen and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for item number nineteen and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
Thank you. Item number nineteen is another bill introduced by our racist in the room that each and every single one of you said you would never support in writing and to the channels of the news channels and everything else. Kevin needs to go, and you guys keep kissing his butt every single day of the week. Yes, Paul, our city needs to continue making decisions in his district without him. Not with him, without him, because he is nothing but a racist. General public comment? Section eighty-eight point six-six, Regulation of Electric Vehicle Charging Station Spaces on Public Streets. Item number three in that section is about towing vehicles that are blocking those areas. Parking enforcement refuses to tow away a vehicle in that situation because there is no signage. So the city needs to wake up and realize that this is a problem because as we pull out more electric vehicles, these chargers are not going to be available. So get your act together, and let's get moving forward instead of backwards. Kevin, resign. We're tired of you disgustingly being there. Thank you.
Next caller, please.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits four-six-nine-five, please go ahead.
Caller with the last four digits four-six-nine-five, this is your last opportunity to speak. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Go ahead, speaker.
Good morning, City Council.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Hello, City Council. My name is John Camara. I've been attending city council meetings for a number of years. And last Friday, as I heard the meeting, I was disgusted with the attitude towards Mr. Merez. Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Padilla treated him very poorly, and he's done more for District Six and District Seven than them put together. I was really disgusted the way they treated him that particular day. Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude public comment on all agenda items. It will close general public comment. So, members, before we move on to our agenda items, I do want to take this opportunity to recognize some extraordinary leaders in our community. On the one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth anniversary of the creation of the Greater Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, I'm pleased to welcome their leadership here to our council chambers. The Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce formed in eighteen eighty-eight. And, members, we don't have a lot of institutions in this city that have been running continuously since eighteen eighty-eight. And it's, I think it's a true statement that the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce was really instrumental in creating the Los Angeles that we know today. Because in eighteen eighty-eight, there were fewer than a hundred thousand people living in Los Angeles, and the work of the Chamber really persuaded people around the country to come here to Los Angeles to stake their claim, to invest in their future. And the Chamber's been doing that ever since. In the early days, it was attracting people to come here for cheap and productive land from the rural areas of the Midwest and other places. The Chamber created an elephant out of walnuts for the Chicago's World Fair in eighteen ninety-three and used that as a means to demonstrate to the rest of the country the agricultural richness of Los Angeles. They used to load up train cars filled with oranges and run them around the Midwest in the middle of winter as saying, "Produce of California." And through strategies like that, the Chamber was instrumental in really causing hundreds of thousands of people to begin coming here to create the city, to go from Los Angeles being really a small town to becoming a major metropolis. The Chamber was instrumental in bringing the Olympic Games to Los Angeles for the first time in nineteen thirty-two and again in nineteen eighty-four, creating the freeway system that we have now, starting with the Arroyo Seco Parkway and then expanding from there. And then you see the equivalent of that now with the Chamber's strong support for the investment in public transit that we have now through the passage of Measure M and otherwise. Transformative change in this city. Following World War II, the Chamber really began addressing some of the challenges that we have as a major metropolis and being much more engaged in the development of a broader range of policies that create, that impact our economy, create jobs, create opportunity for people here in Los Angeles. Now, the Chamber's vision is to create a thriving region for all. It's a vision that we share. And I'm very delighted that the leadership of our Chamber is here with us today. They've been extraordinary partners in- They've been extraordinary partners in so much of what we've done here in this chamber is to try to advance the interests of business, including completely reforming our procurement system through the creation of the Regional Alliance Marketplace for Procurement, or Ramp L.A., creating a new office of procurement. They've been supportive of our creation of the Small Business Commission and the Small Business Procurement Innovation Initiative, because the chamber knows, as we should all know, that without a thriving, vibrant business community here in Los Angeles, we won't be able to achieve any of the other objectives that we want to achieve here in this council chambers in making life better for the people of Los Angeles. So many of the chamber's members are here today through their annual access event series, and I'm sure they'll be meeting with many of you in your offices, but I want to take this opportunity to introduce the president and the CEO of the Greater Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, Maria Salinas, and she's also joined by Mark Lockheim, the immediate past chair of the board of the chamber. And if you'd like to come on up to the speaker podium, Maria, we'd love to welcome you to
Thank you so much, council president, for those great words about the L.A. chamber. I am so proud to helm this organization with such an incredible history. I am Maria Salinas, the president and CEO. I am the first woman to be the president here of the L.A. chamber, and it's a hundred and thirty-five-year history, and it really is an honor to be here with all of you. Bienvenidos a todos, mis miembros, aquí de la cámara de comercio de Los Angeles. Think it's only appropriate that all of you wave and maybe stand up so that the council members can see what an important community you all represent. I have a small businesses here. You don't want to stand up. A small business here. Large organizations, entrepreneurs, startups, universities, other business organizations that are partners with the chamber from throughout Los Angeles. Thank you to them to really build up a chamber that is strong, that is vibrant, that can help partner with all of you to do the many things that you talked about, about creating a thriving region for all. That was a vision that we adopted four years ago, and I really believe it is the heart and soul of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I've had the pleasure to work with all of you in one form or another, whether it's having you visit here the Los Angeles offices of the chamber or in one-on-one calls. And many of the things that we talked about center around our small businesses and just how important our small businesses are to this thriving economy here in Los Angeles, with Los Angeles having over ninety-four percent of its businesses with less than twenty employees. We think of that and we say the power of small business to fuel such a global and dynamic economy needs to be taken care of. We need to invest in them. We need to make sure they can continue to grow jobs and that they keep those jobs here in Los Angeles. So working with all of you in our small business programs, you're going to hear about this when we visit with you later on today. One of the things that we launched here with the city of Los Angeles is a program that we call One L.A. inclusive procurement, and I want to thank all of you that helped us launch that program, because we have participants, small businesses from across Los Angeles. Almost all of your districts have participated in one form or another, the small businesses that are there. And it's really about training them, providing them with technical assistance so that they can earn a contract. We know that with a contract, that means economic mobility. Economic mobility for our small businesses, our entrepreneurs, our business owners is just key and essential. As this economy grows, we want to make sure we are not leaving anybody behind, and through contracting opportunities, we have shown that we've been able to do that. We've trained over five hundred small businesses here in the city of Los Angeles. They've been able to earn over thirty million in contract opportunities with major organizations. They represent a diverse section of industries and organizations that are working here in Los Angeles. So I'm very proud of the history that we have had here in the city of Los Angeles. I'm very much excited about the work that we're doing to help support the job creators, but I'm also excited about the future. We just completed a study called California's Competitiveness, a regional approach, and you will all have a copy of that study. And if you look at the recommendations, it's very much common sense. It's about all of us working together, business, government, our academic institutions. Let's get our workforce ready for the jobs of the future, the jobs that we might not even know what they look like today. And through collaboration, we know that we can make things great here for the people of Los Angeles, our businesses, our families, our students, the future generations of Los Angeles that will really need to benefit from many, much of the economic activity that is happening here in Los Angeles. So I want to thank you for welcoming us here. My entire chamber team is here. My board, my former board chair is here, and I'm just going to pass it over to him, see if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you very much, Maria. And before you begin, Mark, I just want to add this in case he doesn't say it, but Mr. Lockheim also, in addition to being the former chair of the board, represents another one of Los Angeles' great longtime institutions as the CEO of our oldest manufacturer in the city of Los Angeles. I believe that's true. Over a hundred years of manufacturing history, Babrick in North Hollywood, by the way, headquartered in North Hollywood, he's, this company has been committed to Los Angeles for well over a century and has even brought jobs from surrounding cities back into Los Angeles to consolidate operations here. So I'm very pleased to welcome Mark Lockheim.
President Korkorian, thank you very much, and really just want to add my thanks to Maria's, you know, for the chamber. We are a hundred and seventeen-year-old manufacturing company based in President Korkorian's district and thrilled to be a part of Los Angeles and helping to make this to become a really thriving region. But on top of that, our chamber also, in terms of its membership, represents the diversity of Los Angeles in terms of both size and scope and variety in terms of businesses here, and they're all part of the chamber. And we all look forward, not just the chamber staff, but also members of the chamber look forward to working with each and every one of you to help build a thriving region for Los Angeles that is both equitable and builds a strong foundation, economic foundation, for our community. So thank you very much, and we really appreciate this honor.
Thank you very much to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us, and thank you for the continuing advocacy and work that you do in support of the people of Los Angeles and the businesses of Los Angeles. Thanks very much. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also welcome you all to your city council and thank you for your advocacy. You know, it's not unnoticed that there are a lot of women involved in the mission of the L.A. Chamber of Commerce, and that's for good reason. When we talk about entrepreneurship and we talk about what a pivotal role, you know, Maria talks about economic mobility. One of the ways that women have been able to level the playing field for themselves is to become those entrepreneurs in the city of Los Angeles, and that has actually, because you've had to break out in many respects out of the corporate environment, which is often not enabled you to have the ascension to the ranks and to have that earning power. We know how women trail to their male counterparts in earning capacity, and every demographic, Latinas earning amongst the least in those environments. So I just wanted to say thank you for your continued advocacy and work to help make sure that Los Angeles remains a competitive force when it comes to attracting quality businesses that then avail the opportunity for us to provide good-paying jobs that will respect the labor and workforce of Los Angeles and help us stay at the forefront of economic vitality, not just in the state of California, but across the nation. So thank you very much for your continued work, for your collaboration with all of us as we navigate some of the most challenging economic times. You know, we've collaborated in many environments through some of our most difficult economic times, and so I just want to say thank you through the good, through the bad. You will continue to remain a strong partner, I know, with me in advancing an economic climate that is competitive for everyone in Los Angeles. And to that, I say thank you for being here and welcome to your city hall.
All right. Thank you all very much, and if I can ask Mr. Blumenfeld, if you could come on up and Okay, what do we have before us? I think we have some votes available, is that right?
Yes, Mr. President. Council may now vote on items one through eight, thirteen through fifteen, as well as seventeen, sir.
Okay, seeing no speakers on the queue for those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tally the votes.
Fifteen ayes.
Great, those are adopted. Okay, item nine, I believe, is called for a separate vote. Let's take up item nine. We have one speaker on the queue. Mr. Mon.
I just wanted to say that I know that this resolution is a resolve, supportive amended resolution for SB four twenty-three, I believe, which is a continuation of SB thirty-five, which has produced an incredible amount of housing here in the state of California over the past few years. I think this is a really important effort at the state, and I just wanted to draw people's attention to the fact that this morning, I believe, it's now moving towards the governor's desk for signature and that the author has made some of the changes related to sensitive areas that I think some of the people on this body were rightly concerned about in the original version. So I'm happy to support this and also excited that it is moving forward and that it addresses some of the concerns around sensitive areas. Thank you.
Yeah, as I understand it, it is on the governor's desk at the moment. Mr. McCosker.
I don't know if we have the right folks to tell us, but based on those modifications sitting on the governor's desk, I appreciate the modification that we requested regarding the coastal zone. I have an area that does not have a certified LCP, and I believe that you do have a certified LCP. If that language made it in, I just wanted clarification that in fact the same exemption would apply to my area, which does not currently have a certified LCP, but we are in the coastal zone, obviously. And I don't know if there's any speaker that can tell us what that language says.
I don't know if there's any staff available who's that detailed on the bill itself. So as I said, it's on the governor's desk. It'll probably, one way or the other, it's not changing at the moment, but...
Right, okay, thank you.
But we can certainly, I mean, we could continue it if you wanted, and otherwise we can just move forward on a vote.
No, I figure the workings of the state government will continue to grind forward without my vote.
Okay. I don't know. The governor called me, asked me about how you were going to be on this. All right, so any other comments or questions? Then let's open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Fourteen ayes, one no.
Okay. Next, item eleven, I believe, was called special by Ms. Yaroslavsky. Is she here? Yes. Ms. Yaroslavsky, we're taking up item eleven, which I believe you called special for comment.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council president. Colleagues, this Saturday marks the one-year anniversary since Masa Amini died following complications from physical abuse, which she sustained while in custody in the back of a police truck in Tehran, Iran. Masa had been arrested by the Iranian government's morality police for allegedly wearing her hijab loosely, a violation of Iran's strict dress code for women, and we all know this because around the world this made headlines. While her death was horrific, it was not in vain. In the one year since Masa's death, millions of women in Iran and millions more across the globe have stood up in protest of the oppressive Islamic regime. Hundreds have been murdered and hundreds more are at risk of execution, and yet these women have not backed down. Zanzendegeazidi, or women-life freedom, has become a rallying cry the world over, and in Los Angeles, we won't back down either. The motion before us will allow us to rename the intersection of Westwood Boulevard and Rochester Avenue as Women Life Freedom Square in the heart of Little Tehran and sends a clear message that Los Angeles is always going to stand in solidarity with these brave women and the people of Iran and call on Iran's government to end this political violence, and so I therefore urge your i-vote. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers on the queue, William, women-life freedom, let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the votes.
Fifteen ayes.
Great, thank you. I believe that takes us to eighteen. Ms. Yaroslavsky, you also had comments on that. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you again, council president. I just want to speak quickly on this item, where this motion came from, and provide an update on where things stand. So earlier this year, I submitted a motion after we learned that a very large parcel of open space in the heart of the Santa Monica Mountains was coming up for auction. This Cinderos Canyon site remains one of the largest pieces of open space left in the Santa Monica Mountains under private ownership, and it's been on the market for years. We saw this as an opportunity to begin a conversation about how we collectively, the state, the county, private partners, community organizations, could come together to save the land and preserve it for a public benefit. Since I introduced this motion, there's been a robust organizing effort, which has emerged, and all the parties are at the table, with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy recently designating the site as a significant natural resource. This motion doesn't commit any public city dollars to acquiring the parcel. It would simply allow Wreckin Parks and the CAO to be part of these broader conversations in an official capacity, so therefore I'm asking for your i-vote today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, and that brings us up to nineteen, I believe, and there was an amendment that was read into the record. Can we vote on that as amended, or we need to vote on the amendment separately?
Can vote on it as amended, sir.
Okay, I guess importantly, without objection, we will vote on this nineteen as amended. Seeing no speakers on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the votes.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, that is adopted. What else is before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, they're posted and referred without objection.
And the desk is clear, sir.
Okay, the desk is clear. Colleagues, any announcements? Looking to my right, looking to my left, seeing no announcements. Okay, then we will move to adjourning motions. Everyone could rise. Colleagues, has anyone wished to adjourn this meeting in memory? Looking to my right, looking to Mr. McCosker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I respectfully request that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Chester Lee Stewart, Jr., better known to his friends as Chet. The firstborn son of Vivian and Chet Stewart, Sr., he moved from Minnesota to California at a very young age. He fell in love with baseball around age eleven and quickly made up for his lack of little league training to eventually letter on the team as a senior at Redondo Union High School. His love for baseball was a lifelong passion, and he and Teresa were able to visit every major league baseball park, some even twice. His favorite team was the San Francisco Giants, but we will forgive him at this moment and hold his memory dear. When he could no longer play in the old man league, he turned to soccer, starting as an AYSO referee and finishing as the chief referee for Region Fifteen. He attended Cal State Long Beach and became a State Farm agent in Wilmington in the one five. After many years, he did move his agency to Lomita and retired in August of 2022 after nearly forty-nine years of practice. Throughout the years, he formed strong friendships with fellow agents, State Farm staff, policyholders, and members of the community that he served. He achieved crystal excellence, the highest acclaim a State Farm can bestow on its agents. There were notably many organizations that Chet supported through his years. There were notably many organizations that Chet supported through his years, including Toys for Tots, Kiwanis Lions Club, and the Harbor City Boys and Girls Club. As a board member at the Boys and Girls Club, he was honored as Board Member of the Year, an honor that he proudly displayed in his office until he retired. Golf was another of Chet's passions, and he, his golf partners were his buddies and his brothers. He started playing back in his high school days, and he played his final eighteen holes in May with a friend of sixty-five years. Traveling to play golf around the world was a highlight he would share with his friends, even better than the two holes in one that he achieved. Two holes in one. While he loved a great round, he was always talking about, talking to his golf partners, and he kept their friendships as a common thread and theme through his life. Chet leaves his beloved wife of thirty-five years, Teresa, his daughter, Kristen, son Matthew, daughter Stacia, brother Barry, sister Linda, eight grandsons, and one granddaughter. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Colleagues, any additional adjourning motions? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.